For select board and I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, November 30th, 2020. Does any member of the select board? Have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No.
And we will hear back from Joe in just a minute. He stepped out in between our two meetings there. I'm going to. Move along with minutes. Did we have minutes, Dave?
Yeah, there were quite a few in the drop box.
Okay, did everybody see them? I know I saw them because I I. I edit them every time they come out fresh, but I was not. I didn't look at today's list, so. Do you have the list in front of you, Dave?
Yeah, I'm just going back and bringing up.
Joe, do you have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
Oh, yeah, no, I don't.
All right, we have, let's start with the, you have the waterboard meeting of October 19th.
1019. Why don't you just give me the list?
Okay, the waterboard meeting of November 2nd. The select board meeting of November 2nd. And the select board meeting of November 16th.
Okay, I would be looking for a motion to approve the minutes for waterboard on 1019, waterboard on 112, select board on 112, and select board on 1116.
Obvious.
Move by Ken.
Second.
Second by Art. Any discussion, addition, or corrections to any of those minutes? All in favor of circulating those minutes as of approving those minutes as circulated, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed to approving those minutes? Any abstaining? Okay, the minutes are approved for waterboard 1019, waterboard 112, select board 112, and select board 1116. Next up warrants. First up, I have payroll warrant number 10 in the amount of $23,096.20.
So move.
Motion to approve from Art, second by Ken. Any discussion on the payroll?
Can we amend that, Tim, to $22,614.57?
Yes, without objection, let the motion read that number. I haven't figured out why I've got the total over here and then a different number over here on these lately.
Yeah, it's a calculation that goes on the computer.
Okay, so this payroll warrant number 10 is $22,614.57. Hearing no discussion, all in favor of approval, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed to the payroll warrant? Any abstaining? Okay, payroll warrant number 10, $22,614.57 is approved, 50400. And I have check warrant number 17 in the amount of
So move.
Moved by Art, second by Ken. Major items include $1,400 to A&amp;K Agro Services, $1,000 to Aflac, $4,100 to Bennington County Regional Commission, $1,100 to Built Blades LLC.
Snowplow Blades.
$5,000 to Nimerick for something to do with our business software.
Yes, the annual maintenance.
Right. $201,000 to Peoples Bank.
It's the tax anticipation though.
Okay, tax anticipation, right, right. $1,500 to Pete's.
That's a tire company.
All right. $2,100 to Sycamore Landscaping for November services, mowing services. I see $200,700 to William E. Daley. Couple hundred dollars, $300 to the lawyer for miscellaneous matters and trust dissolution. Those are the major items. Any more discussion on? Payroll, I'm sorry, check warrant number 17. All in favor of approving check warrant number 17, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Check warrant number 17, $225,261.48 is approved, 400. And check warrant number 18, $25,919.84.
So move.
Okay.
Moved by Art, second by Ken. These are tax refunds in various amounts from nine to $10,000. And again, I bet if the treasurer here, she would tell us, these are people who paid their taxes, forgetting that their bank escrow fund was paying them. That happens several handfuls of time every year. Any more discussion? All in favor of approving check warrant number 18, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Check warrant number 18, $25,919.84 is approved, 400. I believe that's the warrants. Okay. Are there any announcements?
The Christmas tree has been has been decorated for what it is, but there will be no ceremony this year.
Okay, okay. We still have openings on the DRB. Anyone who would like to serve on the development review board, please let us know. You can contact me or or Dave Kieran, and your name will be put into consideration. At our next meeting, I'm going to make a more formal declaration as per our personnel policy, our our personnel policy, it's the committee appointment policy, appointment policy, that's what it is. There's a sequence of announcements and other declarations leading to the appointment of planning commissioners and developmental review board members in around town meeting time, where we start taking nominations in the fall. So I will make make those formal announcements that include vacancies caused by current terms expiring at our next meeting. Public comments, I don't see anyone from the public here unless Catamount Access wants to make a statement. All right, Dave, that takes us to discussion on FY '22 budget. You sent around quite a number of documents that we've been looking at. Do you want to? Maybe get started by going through your your budget notes and tell us where you're headed philosophically with this?
Sure, the idea for '22 was basically to keep the increase, any increase, as low as possible, given everything that's going on these days and the bit of uncertainty in the economy. The average inflation for this area has been about 1% for the year, so we need to keep things down. Things making that difficult this year are, of course, we run pretty lean to begin with, so there aren't a lot of areas we can look at for cutting. We also have a number of significant increases this year. Some that we can anticipate, some that we did not. So what we're looking at for major items are the insurance and bonds, which went up about $5,436 this year, which is our insurance from everything from workman's comp to liability insurance, the bonding of the treasurer and the town clerk. Fire department communications is up 1,500. This is because all the towns now are getting a bill from the state. That represents 25% of what we will eventually be charged over a four-year period. At the fifth year, we'll be paying the whole amount every year. So it goes 15 to 3 to 4,500 to 6,000, and then the fifth year, whatever that is, that's all to from the state that does the dispatching. This had never been charged before, but now they're sending this out to all emergency service organizations. And Joe will have some comments on that later on when he joins us. Listeners, professional services are anticipated to be up 3,000. That's after we went to the contract with Nimerick and evaluating how much services we use with them. We are in the process of negotiating a new contract with them that may reduce that a little bit, but it's a little bit hard to say. Our employee health insurance is up 5791 this year, which actually isn't that bad. It sounds bad, but it's really not all that bad. Equipment maintenance, originally, I would have had this doubled in the budget this year, but I decided to cut back. Our expenses on equipment maintenance, this is the highway department, are way down this year, and we're just keeping a close watch on everything. But part of the overruns from the last couple of years was getting the equipment back up to the proper shape. We have had a problem truck, as we're all aware of, but now we think that's going to be in good shape from now on. We have.
Dave, if I could comment right there, how much, how much between what you had planned to put into maintenance and what you're suggesting now that we put into maintenance? Do you remember that dollar figure?
It's about double that. It's down about 5,700.
5,700.
Two years, we're up. Let's see. Because in the 20 budget, it was 93,000. It was up 108 to 108,000 last year. It was going to go up higher this year. It's actually down to 104, but we've removed a number of vehicles from the fleet, so we are actually dealing with fewer vehicles. And each vehicle will have $300 more this year than was originally planned. I had planned it to be about 2,600 per vehicle. But we just, we took that back. And these numbers have remained the same in fiscal '20 and for every year before that, each individual each individual vehicle was allocated $1,000 or $2,000. Last year, I bumped them all up to 2,005 because we had been running into higher expenses. And this year, I put it up to 2,350 for each vehicle. Obviously, one vehicle absorbs a lot more than other vehicles. So what we're looking at is fewer vehicles this year, which took the overall cost down to 104, but each individual vehicle is allocated more. So I think that should work out. Our maintenance is coming down from its peak over the last two years since we always started getting these vehicles repaired quicker and sending them to garages to be fixed.
What's that include? That include the tires just made up, your repairs, your everything?
That's tires, maintenance, repairs, everything. Everything that we can't do at a reasonable cost inside the garage.
Yeah, my only thought there is I have heard you saying that we've been under budgeting for maintenance lately. And I realize that this is a lean year and we've got to hold the line wherever we can. But my, my feeling is vehicle maintenance is not something we can hold the line on. If a truck needs repair and we got to spend the money, and if we don't budget it, we're going to end up deficit spending it. So, you know, make sure that number is where it needs to be, is my suggestion.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's up 15,000 from where it was in '20. And it's up individually more, so we'll have a second look at it. But yeah, I don't want to be even far behind the eight ball on repairs, and our budget for maintenance of vehicles is pretty low compared to most other places. And I know we had the guys working on trucks, but they spent a lot of time working on trucks and it's not their primary function. So there's always a a cost from them not being on the roads, repairing the roads. And that's what we're trying to avoid. But I'll give a second look to this and I'll review it with Mike.
Other than the tandem, that's been a problem. We've gotten rid of the Dodge, which was a big problem and that sort of stuff. So I, I can see where we've weeded out some problems.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's I think that's part of it. We've spent a lot of money bringing some of these trucks back up to par. We've gotten rid of a bunch of them, especially the older ones. So I think we are in a better place. The tandem that was the biggest problem has seriously gotten so much work that there's nothing left to replace, you can almost say. It's you know, the only good thing I can say about that truck is we got a rebate on the new truck we have coming.
The other thing, Dave, is they've been painting them bodies and stuff that they never did before, too. That's going to mean a lot.
Yeah. I'm going to ask to pause for a minute. I have two of our people who've just sent me texts saying they're having trouble getting in. So if I go off screen for a moment, so I can see if I can get these guys in.
Okay. Yeah, I do not show anybody trying to get in.
Yeah. Get an attack cap.
Attack cap.
Tim, did you unlock the meeting?
Oops.
Okay, Joe, we had it locked for an executive session.
Yep. Just all these buttons, you got to remember to push all of them. All right, Mike and Joe, sorry about that. We were in executive session in the waterboard and I had locked the meeting and I forgot to unlock it when we came out, so.
Okay.
That was that.
That's all right. I was trying to figure out what was going on, that's all.
Okay.
Dave, just a side note here, I, when I set up a meeting, I, I disable the waiting room. I find that it it's, it just is something else I have to do. There's nobody that we're going to not allow into our meeting, so it's just an unnecessary step, I find.
Yeah, I thought I had disabled it for this meeting, but maybe I'm learning this thing too. Maybe I didn't hit it the right way. Because it isn't necessary. We don't need anybody in the waiting room. People should be able to just come and go.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll move on to, for Joe and Mike, we're just doing a summary and then we'll start with you guys.
Okay.
So we just went over equipment maintenance, garage utilities, which isn't all that unexpected, because we didn't know what to expect. Trended up higher, so we're looking at the usage of the building heat, electric and all that. I expect that to come down. The two bigger items this year are both the reserve funds, the fire truck reserve is going up 25,000, and the equipment reserve, which is for the DPW trucks, is going up 10,000. Both of those have been planned. This is not anything special. They're just the bigger items in here. And what I'm planning to kind of reduce, to get this as low as I can for this year, is looking at the reserve funds, we have Park Cemetery and Memorial all have large balances, and the Park and Cemetery have significant funds held by the Board of Public Trustees. We can easily cut these and slowly bring them back in over the next couple of years without affecting their operations. There's been no expenditure from the memorial fund for several years that I'm aware of. Parks and Cemetery have a lot of money available to do all the projects we intend to do over the next year or two. And for the parks, the biggest one probably won't even be done next year because we want to have a grant to subsidize it, because it could be 40, 50, $60,000. So we want to have a grant to do that. As far as the municipal road general permit and the drainage in the park, which will make the whole park function better. The other one that I would take out is Coal Hall. Because again, that would drop at 10,000. The Coal Hall has had a lot of renovations over the last few years. The garage is almost gone now. What we're looking at for the exterior work is, again, going to be pretty expensive. Trying to make the place code compliant. So we're looking for a grant from that. We will carry forward the reserve from this year because I really don't have anything planned to do around here. Originally, we thought we might have some issues with the garage, but we sold that and actually made money on that, so. I think it's just safe to drop that for a year. We'll have nearly 10,022. And hopefully by that point, we'll be looking at a funded grant that we could do construction on in the summer of '22 or '23. But you have to look at that as a long-term item there. And then reductions also, this is something I want to put out there as a potential, is, you know, having a freeze for this year on employee salaries, keeping them level funded for the next year. It doesn't save a lot of money. It's something we can discuss. We've also cut off 3,000 from professional services, 3,000 from culverts, and about 8,000 from gas, diesel, and oil. The gas, diesel, and oil had always been projected on a volatility of market that just has not appeared. And I think we can safely reduce that over the next couple of years. So then, with those changes, the budget as presented here would be basically a 1.5% increase over '21, which would be a tax increase of .0137 per 100,000. Or if you have a $250,000 home, $34 for the year. There's other potentials of saving. The only place I can see without doing damage the future years, which I want to be cognizant of, because when you don't have a lot to cut, when you start cutting, it has to be made up somewhere. And then you come back and you have a much larger increase later on, which is to no one's benefit. The only other thing I can see is trimming off 15 or so from the paving reserve. We've upped that from where it had been for years at 35,000. We've put it up to 45,000. We're not doing any paving this year because the state's not giving us any grants. So if we just reduce the contribution for next year, one time only, we would still have 55 to 70,000 available for paving in '22, which is better than in any year since I've been here, and probably better for some time. And that would reduce it even less overall, obviously. And looking forward into '23, you can start bringing back some of these expenses by refunding Coal Hall. 25% of the three funds, Park Cemetery and Memorial. Well, I skipped level and ceiling before cutting that out this year, which is 5,000. But we would still continue to do that because airport road is in need of, basically, level and ceiling is crack ceiling. So we would use the host town tax fund money that's been sitting there, that's been accumulating, that was really designated to do repairs to airport roads should it be damaged. I think this is a good way of putting that money to use. We would hire a contractor, because that would be a lot of work. Hire a contractor to just do it, so our crew can continue on doing their normal jobs. And then we just bring that stuff back in over the next couple of years and get everything back to where it was. Like I said, if we go for too much, we really don't have anywhere to really go without affecting operations, especially more than half the money currently goes to highways, and we're just getting the highways back up to a good level. And I don't want to start going backwards. And for other parts of the highway, you have to keep in mind that the Class 3 road fund for this year, fiscal '21 and fiscal '22, is already spent. Because when construction begins in the hollow, both years are committed to finishing that project. And, you know, that's why we saved the money and, you know, maybe there could have been better timing than in the middle of a pandemic, but, you know, this is what needs to be done. And that doesn't, well, we don't have time with the grant to postpone that. We have to get it done. And actually, the culvert's coming in a couple of weeks, so. But it does take up a good chunk of the Class 3, all of it, not a good chunk, all of it, for the next two years. So that's a quick overview of the proposal so far.
Okay, that all sounds good to me. I guess, you know, the main thing, as Dave said, our, you know, at least half our total town budget is roads. Mike, I'm sure you and Dave have been talking about this. Are you, are you and he in agreement on where we can cut corners in the budget and still keep, keep up the kind of progress that you've been making with the roads the last few years?
Yeah, I think the way he's got it drawn out should be fine. Even though we have to use all the Class 3 fund to finish the grant for the Shasbury Hollow culvert, but I think what David has done is, should be okay. We should be able to keep doing our regular maintenance. Maybe just not a couple major construction projects, but we can keep on moving along.
Is there anything on, on your worry list in terms of major projects that we won't get to? Because we got, he said, two to three years before we're looking at a significant Class 3 road fund again.
Um, nothing at the moment. I think we're okay. I think we kind of have to do what we got to do in the hollow there, so, but we should be all set.
All right, and we're good with the trimming the paving reserve? We're going to be able to do what we have to do?
Um, as long as we get those grants that we submitted for this year that all got postponed, I'm pretty sure we should be fine. Right, Dave?
Yeah, because the 40 or 45,000, I forget now, off the top of my head, that's goes, went into the paving reserve for this year is just going to sit there till next year, because we're not getting any grants. So all that money will be available next year. You have 45,000 in this year, so with the 30,000 from next year, you know, we're looking at, we have to clear out a little deficit, but we're looking at anywhere from 55 to 70,000 available. Our match for our, our grant would take up like 35,000 of that, and then we'd have extra left over. It's actually the most, next year, even with the cut, would be the most money we've ever had in the paving reserve in one year.
I've got a comment about, you made some comment about if we don't get the loan from the state to buy the mower at 2% that we would rent another year. I, I just don't like renting. I think it's wasted money. Have you looked into what a bank would loan us money for? At what rate? How much would that impact? What we'd have to pay? I mean, I think we got a good credit rating and it would be, it would be, they would be able to hold the title to the tractor.
You can always recover your money back on it, too, if you needed to sell. I mean, you're not going to lose everything.
Yeah, I have not yet, but I have been thinking along those lines. I don't really want to rent. Well, I was trying to illustrate that it's not an increased line at all. The 24,000 is going to rental or for the interest on this mower. But if the state for some reason turns us down, yeah, we should go to a bank, because it would be better off to just have it, own it. We're going to have to buy one sooner or later. The state interest is 2%. I bet we could get one pretty close in the private sector, too. Uh, the state interest is two percent. Uh, I bet we could get one pretty close in the private sector too.
Okay, I agree.
Mike, uh, are you going to be, would you be available Thursday or Friday to look at that tractor in London, Dave?
Uh, I'll know better tomorrow afternoon.
I, I can't go tomorrow. He's not there.
I'm saying I'll know better by the end of tomorrow.
Yeah, okay, I'll call you.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah. What have you got in uh, budget, Dave, for fuel for the uh, equipment stuff, the town garage?
Fifty thousand.
You think that uh, if this Green New Deal goes by, you see gas go to double?
No, no, not at all.
You know?
Nope.
I do.
Me too.
Well, I think that's the kind of speculation that led us to having it high for the last few years. So uh, we would certainly see that trending in advance. Uh, but right now, even at reduced to fifty thousand, we're still uh, that's five thousand over what we used in twenty and about eight thousand over what we used in nineteen. Uh, so we're still have a cushion there.
Well, what would hap, how much are we uh, are we, have we used all the gravel budget or you even got some left?
I'm sorry, say that again?
If you got the gravel, what is the gravel budget? Have we, have we got anything left from that or?
Oh, we have tons left in that. Everything uh, like so far, actually, this is the end of last month. Out of ninety thousand in the gravel budget, twenty-eight thousand has been spent. So we're, we're very good on all these, these uh, gravel and everything that kind of went over last year because last year we kept driving and driving because we were getting so much highway work done. This year we're being very cognizant of staying within the margins of everything and bringing this in uh, flat.
What would happen, what would happen if we took ten percent of the gravel budget and picked it up for fuel, just in case?
I, I don't think it needs to be done because um, you know, what you're talking about is no different than uh, hedging on the volatility of the Middle East when you look at this.
This, this, this is a sure thing. If the bu, if the election stays the same.
That's true because right now we're an energy leader for the first time ever and Biden's plan is to get rid of, you know, fracking and fuel and everything else. So it's going to, it'll double more than double fuel prices.
Well, I, I, well, you know, like I said, I've always hedged on volatility of the market. And not wanting to cut back too much on these because these numbers are kind of based on whether it was real volatile in the beginning. But anything like that, uh, I view it only as different as, you know, the Bayway in New Jersey burning down and fuel being cut off to the mid, to the northeast for a while. Anything can happen. So we could, we'll have to address those things as they come.
Well, I'm just, all I'm saying is, if, if it happened, could we cover it?
Wait, we don't want to be in a prone position if that happens.
We, we can cover a great deal of volatility. If, if, uh, you could pick almost any area in here and we could cover a catastrophic loss. Or, you know, a huge spike. I mean, who knows? Inflation could go up like it was in the seventies. We could go back to
All I'm saying is could do if it happened.
Yeah, absolutely.
We could take it out of the, out of the gravel and put it into the fuel.
Yeah, because remember, this, this is a planning tool. You can't take highway stuff and use it for something else. But you can use highway stuff anywhere within the highway.
That would be
You know, if we run out of fuel and I have fifty thousand sitting in gravel, well, we're buying fuel. We're not
Okay, all right. That's all, that's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking, Dave.
Yeah, okay. Yep.
Okay, uh, did we, uh, we kind of skipped uh, from general budget to highway budget? Is there more on highway budget we need to talk about before we go to the fire department? All right. I understand we, uh, the main point with the fire department is we need to uh, establish a fund to replace some aging equipment.
Yeah, Joe, I gave him a brief outline. That's all. Let you take over for that.
Oh, okay. Um, basically, um, if you saw the outline, if our air packs or SCBA's um, are starting to get aged. The industry standard is to replace an air pack in fifteen years. And we're starting to see some of our air packs crowding almost twenty years. So Dave and I sat down and tried to come up with a plan where we would establish a sinking fund um, for air pack replacements over the next um, several years. Instead of trying to replace them all at once. Um, as you can see, an air pack costs about ten thousand dollars. And the cost of them will certainly never go down. Um, and if they raise between six and seven percent each year. Um, I would like to try to establish a sinking fund to keep ahead of it so that we're not hit with um, seventy or eighty thousand dollars in air pack replacements all at one time, trying to figure out where we're going to come up with the, the money. Um, so if we did establish this, it would be a long-term goal. Um, and something that we would uh, invest in for the future. Air packs are used more than just for structural firefighting. We use them in car fires and chimney fires and and other things too, just to keep us safe and, and, and breathing good air and not picking any toxic fumes. So um, to get twenty years of an air pack is, is kind of stretching it. But um, because we have such good maintenance record. Um, we do have PM done every year on them. Um, it, they have lasted us, but we got to start thinking about replacing them. And uh, that's my proposal.
How many do we have?
Um, overall, we have we have about sixteen overall. Um, just had that figured for me. And we're looking at uh, at playing like in the area, I think Dave, did we say about ten thousand dollars? At least starting for now. And what what would also go along with the SCBA's is um, the air bottles too. Each SCBA would have a um, spare bottle that would go with it. And um, so as of right now, um, we have one pack that's almost twenty years old, nineteen years old. Three packs that are sixteen years old, eight packs that are ten years old and one pack we bought about a year ago. Um, I'm not sure if anybody was on the select board at the time, but several years ago when um, Margie was, was our town administrator, we took a leased own um, purchase for SCBA's and that it worked out for us at that time because we were kind of short on funds and we were spending money on the facilities. So I'm not really in favor of it. I'd rather buy them is, and save up for them um, in the future. Uh, because it, it kind of hampered our equipment fund for about seven years where we were taking ten thousand dollars out each year. So um, to me, looking forward is, is, is probably the most prudent thing that we can do.
It kind of sounds to me like we're just going to need to buy whatever we can afford for a few years. We won't be starting a fund right away because it sounds like we've got a handful that are ready to be replaced.
Well, if, if we were to start now, um, and put it in ways and say like two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four with ten thousand dollars each year, that would replace the three packs that we got coming up. And they'd be close to twenty years old, you know, granted. But um, you know, we had other needs over the past ten, fifteen years, you know, with the facilities and trying to get them back in shape. We've done that. So um, even though our air packs are probably on the older side um, of what they should be, I, I think we, we do a pretty good job of maintaining them. And if we, if we can establish a sinking fund, um, I, I, I think that it would be the most prudent thing we can do. It would really help us in the long term and not come up with a big chunk of money trying to replace them all at one time.
What do you need for a sinking?
I was thinking about ten thousand a year.
I would agree with you that sinking fund's a better deal than try to
Yeah.
I think I was on there when Margie was here.
Yeah, you, you very well.
They had everything that you could buy, borrow or steal. It was leasing. Ten million dollars on lease for everybody and we, we just, you know, we couldn't handle it.
Yeah, at that time we were leasing the fire truck. We were leasing the air packs and it was just, I, I'm not a big fan of leasing.
I agree with you.
Um, but um, in ten years, we, we have eight packs right now. They're ten years old. So like I said, if, if we kind of put a little bit of money away each, not a little bit of money, but if we put money away each year. Um, so and, you know, say eight, nine years, we would have the money to replace them. And if we had kicking a little bit from our equipment fund to, to, for any overage or any increase in in the price of an air pack, we, we could do it and it wouldn't bother us that much.
Are you, are you using the composite tanks or are those the, the steel tank?
No.
Composite?
Yeah, the, the steel tanks went out out a while ago because they were just too heavy for one thing.
Just trying to see how old your equipment is.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, we, we got beyond that part of it anyways, but yes, the
Why do they take the heat? Pretty good?
Yes.
And they must, yeah.
Yeah. And, and like I said, my guys are real good with maintenance. Um, and we have um, Reynolds and Sons MSA uh, come in every year and go through them um, from top to bottom and make sure that they're all in working condition and then fix any uh, issues that we may have.
Yeah, it, it used to be with the metal tanks that the, the, the metal tanks would rust on the inside or whatever and that would make them dangerous. That's why you would replace them. But what, what would they replace them for now? Like the O-rings or valves or something goes, what goes wrong with them?
Well, they do a hydro test uh, to make sure that the, the tank is um, safe in, in being able to use. Um, they test the, the face piece to make sure that um, a seal can be given and there's no cracking of the rubber. Uh, you know, dry rot or anything of that nature. And then just an overall view with the whole um, SCBA to make sure that
Just picking your brain a little bit, but I can, can you buy replacement parts for the tanks? Like the face mask and hoses and
A, and we can and we do.
Okay, okay, that's, that's good.
Stuff does get damaged, you know, for usage and uh, uh, we do replace whatever um, needs to be
Especially the face mask. I'm sure they must get messed up pretty bad.
Yeah, they get scratched and they get hit and they get, you know, damaged. But yes, we do, we do keep ahead of it. And that's why we're able to to keep up for an extended period of time.
That's good. I think it was back in July, I think it was back in July, you were mentioning something about uh, for new equipment, eleven thousand dollars?
For
That was for radios or what that was? We were talking about something. I just wrote footnote. I wish I was more detailed.
No, I think those were the pagers.
Oh, for the pagers, okay, okay. Yeah, something to do with Wells Communication.
Oh, yeah, probably pagers then, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Unless it was for the new fire truck, Dave.
Uh, yeah, oh yeah, you know what? That could have been the radio for the new fire truck too.
Or, or a combination of radios and pagers and everything else, yeah.
But Joe, to go to your question of the, the uh, two Joes here. Joe had, had talked to me about uh, in the uh, just their equipment fund in the regular budget. Uh, they will be buying those new pagers, gradually replacing all the pages they have. Uh, that's, will be right out of their, their regular equipment budget.
Yes.
Uh, Dave, I got a question for you. Was, how does this appear? Do we go before the, the, the voters? Is this as a separate line item that they got to approve? Or do we put it right in the budget and just it's all part of the general budget?
No, they have to approve a new reserve fund. So it'll be a valid item.
Okay.
I wouldn't expect there to be much controversy over
No, no, but I didn't. I just wanted to know how we
Yeah.
Uh, and so, but should uh, when we talk about how much it's going to raise taxes, are we including this? That it will be passed?
Yeah, in, in my calculations, I assume this is being passed.
Okay, thank you. And uh, I guess so. I just got a question for Joe. Is the, is the uh, is the uh, rank and file of the uh, fire department kind of come to terms with the fact that the, that uh, money for the trade-in on the truck isn't theirs? Has that been pretty much resolved?
I think so.
Okay, I, I mean, if you, if
Dave and I, Dave and I sat and talked, um, and if we stick with the plan that we have that he's uh, come up with. Um, I think we'll be fine. Um, when it comes time to replace the, the engine up north.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Yeah, we could, we could look at the capital budget plan if you want, uh.
No, I just, yeah, I, I just thought it should be explained to him and I'm sure Joe did, did a good job of explaining it to him.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're all set there. We're, we're good.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Yep. Joe, just for my own curiosity, are those pagers? Are they GPS?
Boy, you know what? There is so much of those pagers. I'll have to look. Then I will, I will have to look. These pages are so far beyond what we've had before.
Yeah.
Um, that I will, I will look into that, Joe.
Who, who's the maker of that? Is it Motorola or?
No, more, we, we got away from Motorola for various reasons. Um, and um, this is a Swiss phone. Um, which is um, highly recommended by Wells Communication. A lot of departments are using them now. Um, and so far the, they're twice the radio that we had before.
Well, they've been tried and tested with the other departments. They're very happy.
Yeah, does the Swiss phone in Europe is what the Motorola would be here in the United States.
Okay.
The, the Motorola, um, I have some issues with it. Let me just put it that way. Um, but yes, I, we're, we're, so far we're very happy. You know what? I will check on the GPS part of it because I never gave that a thought.
Uh, Joe, uh, Fireman Joe.
Okay.
The uh, the business of uh, the nine-one-one expense coming to us. Uh, have you talked to Bennington if we could be included with them? Because I understand they have their own.
Um, I, I talked to Dave about this and um, I am going to talk to Bennington. Um, uh, and see if, if they could first of all take us on. Um, I, I, I know that their command center is, is fairly new and um, i- it, it may be able to accommodate us. Um, and of course then it's, it comes down to talking money and prices.
Right, okay.
I, I will contact Chief Doucette um, and, and see what it would cost us per year. Um, because the state of Vermont, it's going to be quite costly.
Well, I, I can see this happening more and more as they, they tell us we've got to do things and then they have trouble coming up with the money. So they tell us we have to do it.
Right, you know.
I can see this coming, yep.
And unfortunately they keep, you know, they build new communication centers and they got to pay for it.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, uh, it's something that we're going to have to look into.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Okay, if that uh, takes care of uh, the first run-through with the budget, Dave, anything else you want to uh, do there? I would like to get to the um, the capital budget uh, when you're done with the operating budget.
Well, the operation budget, I think uh, we presented the two major portions of it tonight because uh, the new reserve fund for the fire department was an important uh, addition and uh, going through the DPW things. The rest of it, we can review at the next meeting and continue reviewing uh, and get some feedback from uh, the people out there who are watching this and see uh, what we should adjust in what direction. Uh, but we could go on to the capital budget now. Uh, most, everything else in the overall line item budget is staying exactly where it was this year. Cause we just can't uh, those that don't need to go up haven't gone up. Those that were getting bills from like insurance, you know. Those that must go up are going up.
Um, wh- when does this have to go to print, uh, Dave?
Oh, we have to the end of December. So you know, I'd just like to get this going and get Oh, we have to the end of December, so you know, I'd just like to get this going and get ideas out there. Are there some things even proposed here that, you know, you know, it's all up for discussion? But I think I hit on the points that maybe need to be discussed or thought about. Uh any adjustments anybody wants to start making or suggesting to things in here? I produce my usual collection of charts and graphs to. I'm trying to make it more so that when people look at this at home. Friendly graphs are a lot easier to look at than try to read through the line item, which I think bores a lot of people.
Tim, what do you think about having a a a meeting? Uh a selectmen's meeting just to talk about the budget for the general public to tell it, you know, they won't have to wait through. Announcements and all that sort of stuff, I mean, we'll have a few announcements, but warrants and all that sort of stuff. If we had to have one just for the budgets and it's advertised that way, is that a possibility?
Um I think it uh, I I think it's a good idea, I think it kind of, whether or not we have a time for a. Time to do that kind of depends on what we have to get through between now and the end of the year.
Okay.
That's really a question for Dave, because we, I know we've got. Um interviews with uh people who want to uh increase or ask for new community appropriations.
There are some of those.
Right now, we have one, no one else is uh has asked and. The people who I thought were going to ask were increases in their uh. In their allotment from last year uh have not, so it may only come down to one person, one new group who wants to join. Uh I did make it clear as the motion was that if anyone asks for an increase this year, they have to appear. They're actually due today, that's why the line item is blank under community appropriation, I don't expect it to go much higher, but. I don't have anything there. Uh so far, everything has been the same, but the deadline stays, so. Of course, I won't have everything for another week probably. But I'm not expecting any real big change, I think everybody appreciates that. This might not be the year to be asking for that extra five hundred thousand dollars or something.
Okay. I I I just think.
About doing that in uh on our second meeting in uh December, do you think, Dave?
Uh unless you want to schedule a special one before that, because the second meeting will be, what, the twenty first? I don't have a calendar here, hold on. Yeah, the second uh meeting will be the twenty first, so I don't know how popular that would be.
Probably not.
So that would mean our next meeting, which would be next week. I mean, we can certainly uh. Try to make the point that uh that it's uh. A a budget meeting for the public, I'm not sure how we get that message across to get people to come, I guess. Because it's really not, you know, on on an average meeting, we're not doing a uh lately, we're not doing a lot of stuff. We could, we could move things like minutes and warrants to the end of the meeting, is that the kind of thing you had had in mind?
I I I just, this is going to be totally different, I mean, once, once it goes to print, that's it. And that's, I don't think people understand that. In fact, somebody wanted to. Uh wanted me to look into possibility of if uh you have a a virtual meeting. Uh town meeting night and then if anything has changed, then that's what they vote on the next day and. I tried to explain to them, once it goes to print, that's what we got to vote on, there's no changes.
Yeah, you reminded me the other big thing that has to happen uh. And uh probably the, we were talking about doing it at the first meeting in December, which would be next week. Is um deciding uh whether or not we're going to have an in-person. Town meeting this year or not, or move it to the Australian ballot. Uh that would be another question, Dave, if we uh move the. Town meeting to Australian ballot. Um does that affect the clerk's budget? Because I noticed that the expenses were down considerably this year. For uh town meeting, but I guess we always have, we always have at least selectmen to vote on, so I guess it would just be. Typing a few more things onto the ballot.
Yeah, and the main decrease to hers is uh we anticipated. Uh this election year, uh we didn't anticipate the pandemic, but we had upped everything significantly. Knowing that this, we had multiple elections this year for one, we had three this year instead of the normal two cycles. Uh so that budget was just up a lot for those reasons. Uh so normally after the presidential year, we do trim them back down. But the bad, the printing and all that, that's, we do the same printing whether.
Okay.
You know, if we don't have town meeting, town meeting is irrelevant to the printing of the Australian ballot.
Okay, okay.
I mean, this would only add one little line to it, because it's a yes or no, do you approve the budget of whatever it is, or yes or no? And if it's turned down, then we do what, you follow the law and you just. Uh the board works on a new lower budget, you put it up for vote again and see what happens. But which is another reason why, because I respect the fact that people aren't going to be able to. Do the normal commenting or the adjustments from the floor, uh other than the the air pack. Um reserve, which they'll have a separate vote on anyway, I didn't want anything to really. You know, be different this year, in fact, as low as possible to make it as minimally controversial as possible. There's nothing is is really going on this year. There's no big proposals, it's just, it's just not the year for it.
Yep. I. I I, you know, i- if it's possible to have a special meeting or or maybe we should have a meeting where we talk about it a lot, it's or. Don't know, I just, I don't think people realize what might happen.
Um well, yeah, I mean, uh special meeting, I think. Wouldn't get the attention that you want, it needs to be on one of the regular meetings to to do that and it sounds like it needs to be next week. Because the one after that is the week of Christmas, so.
Yep.
Um I think uh, you know, at this point, probably the best we can do is just uh put out the word. Uh that we're going to be, you know, talking about the budget a lot at our next meeting and. And put out the word, you know, that this is, you know, what we're doing, is we're. We're cutting the budget as much we can, but people have to realize that we operate on a very lean budget in a normal year, so. It's not like we can cut out a lot of fluff because there's a pandemic, there is no fluff in our budget, so. Um it's going to go up a little bit uh because we have to to keep up with inflation and keep up with our responsibilities. Uh but uh. That's, that's the way it is, so yeah, let's plan on uh essentially, I I think the the best. My my thought is the best message is kind of, you know, the summary that Dave went through tonight. Uh assuming that we keep, you know, we don't change our minds very much in the next week about about uh our status on the budget and I'm not inclined to. Uh that, you know, this is what it is, is we're. We're cutting anywhere we can, including, you know, seriously considering a a freeze on on payroll. Uh in order to get through this year, uh but there is some stuff that has to go up because we have to, like air packs for the firemen, that's. That's not something that we can uh not do. Um Dave, I would like you to walk me through the 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 ten-year capital equipment plan. There's a lot of numbers there and I'm not sure I uh. I I get it unless you say it to me out loud.
Okay, um why don't I bring it up on my screen? Hold on one second here.
I can bring it up if you like.
Well, if you have it right in front of you, I don't have it ready to go on mine.
Yeah, I do.
Okay, so we're looking at two things here. Uh the left is uh. Now yours Xed out for some reason. Hmm, that's odd.
Do you need it? Are you missing something?
No, just one number, I can make that up on the fire truck, it doesn't have a price in there. So let's start with uh, well, let's start with the fire department because it's easier to go through. Uh if everybody can see that, uh we're going to end the year with about fifty-three sixty-nine in their res. Equipment reserve budget, their fire truck reserve budget, and that's just because we just took possession of a brand new fire truck. So in the planning we did for this, each year, the reserve fund increases. A minimal amount until we get to fiscal twenty-six, where we will replace the next truck. Uh my estimate based on inflation is four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for that truck. Uh that is in fiscal twenty-six, but what we'll do is we will order that like we did this one. A full year in advance because it takes so long to get these. And then uh after that, we will begin saving again for the next truck, which is a bigger truck. Uh and we will be ready to order that in twenty twenty-nine. And that one will be around four hundred and seventy-two thousand, you know, give or take. It's impossible to be exact with this, but uh if you take a historical inflation average and just put it to the cost of the past truck. It gives you an estimate. So far, they've been pretty, pretty spot on. Uh but again, this is a planning tool and when you're looking at ten years in advance, there's a whole bunch of things that can happen within ten years, but we're. On the road to uh, you know, achieving our goals with this. Uh when we started this, when Joe and I talked, you know, five years ago, when we started saving for the one we just bought. What we want to do is the fire department had bought what are called the twins, one we just sold, the other one's in the North Side Fire Station. Uh we never want to have two fire trucks parked at the same time again. So each truck at the completion of this, each truck will be on a fifteen-year cycle. So they'll get, each truck will be replaced every fifteen years. Uh and um that will keep them all up to date. This is trucks age out, you have to add new equipment to them to keep them up to meet the standards and the higher value and uh. Performance level of your truck lowers your fire insurance rates, so it's important to keep them up as uh. As well as we can and provide new equipment for the volunteers because they're volunteering to go do a job a lot of people wouldn't do if they were paid to do it, so. Uh and this is all all doable, because each year may look like a lot, but. Yeah, the only option is to borrow money. On those leasing, which includes the interest, you have to pay a fee to the broker, you have to pay a fee to the attorney to review the thing, it's. There's so many fees on it, it just jacks up the cost of these. And meanwhile, instead of paying interest, we're collecting interest and at some point, hopefully interest will be better than the uh really low rates we have now. But uh it it does, it does work out, you just have to stick to the plan. And again, as you get into the later years, you know, that hundred and twenty-five thousand, a totally different value today. So you're just uh, they're they're adjusting for inflation too. Uh because that's really the name of the game in all this.
Where's uh? Replacement for the uh Volvo Baco on there, Dave, I don't see it.
No, we're going through the fire department right now.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
But we can go over to the uh, to the other side.
All right.
If we go back to the top, the top of the highway, we'll follow through this. Uh and yeah, as you can see, the reserve balance for this year is zero. Because we will be taking possession of a new truck, uh well, it was supposed to be last month, it's supposed to be next month, so it'll probably be February. Because Viking is.
Don't say that.
Viking is behind on getting the plow equipment attached to it. Uh in fiscal twenty-three, we'll replace the other uh seventy-four hundred. And then you as you go down here, fiscal twenty-four, that's the wrong truck number I discovered, it's number five. And we're going to replace that with a fifty-five hundred, not a seventy-four hundred. That's a uh a smaller truck, but this is a pavement plow truck. Um and that balance there, the purchase price, estimated purchase prices are in red. That number is going to go up uh probably twenty-five, thirty thousand, Mike, something like that.
Yeah.
Because I priced this out based on the fifty-five hundred we just bought. But I well didn't calculate the fact that we didn't buy it with plow equipment on it, because we had some here. So that's going to go up a bit, but it's still very doable. And then we get into the seventy-six hundreds, the John Deere Baco, and this takes us right through to replacing the grader. Out in twenty thirty-one, uh which is the most expensive piece of equipment here. Um get to Ken's question, and this includes basically every piece of major capital equipment we have. Including the sidewalk plow, which wouldn't be the fancy thing we have now, it'll be more like a uh. You know, just a a sidewalk plow, it won't be a fancy thing at all. Um to get to Ken's question, I'll I'll let Mike talk about that, but the Volvo we're we're looking at is uh. Trading the Volvo in and getting a new smaller one at no expense. Uh because we don't actually need the size we have now, we need more versatility. And they're a lot cheaper than what we have. Mike, if you want to expand on that a little bit.
Yeah, I'm working right now with Caterpillar and John Deere salesman, Volvo. Uh giving me trade-in prices towards a smaller machine for us, whether it be rubber tire or tracked. I'm gonna see where the prices come in and go from there. Um that's another project I'll be working on here, I've kind of wanted to get the mowing tractor wrapped up. Before I started that, but I I've talked with some of the salesmen and they seem to think that Volvo will bring in a pretty good penny. Um it's not that old and it's, I mean, it's only got three thousand hours on it. So we're, I'm going to shoot towards um seeing. About the size of machine that we need, because that one takes up the whole road, most everywhere in this town and. Slows down production versus a machine that we can use in one lane and have the other lane open like we're supposed to and. Uh should, should all work out, hopefully, but I'm waiting for them to get back to me as well.
Did they put, they finally got ahold of you then?
Yeah, yeah, just not being able to meet in person is tough, so just getting a hold of them and stuff is uh.
Which ones got ahold of you, Mike? Because I, I threw three of them, they never, never did anything for me.
Um Jake from John Deere, uh can't remember the guy's name from Cat, I'd have to look at my phone. What's that?
Jay Fish.
No, Jake.
No, Jay Fish from Caterpillar.
The J, it might be J. Um and then the guy from Volvo is coming down to look at it, so I'll believe that when I see it, but.
Yeah.
That's he, he's, he wants to um appraise it and we'll go from there. But that's the plan with the excavator.
That's what I said, you want to get rid of it, why you have to value it though.
Yeah, it's definitely time, it's something that I'm going to work on through in the next couple of months, so you'll be hearing more about it.
I hope so.
I mean, it it is a, it's a good running machine, it can lift a lot, it's just, it's, it's too big for us, it really is.
Well, they got it with a round stick on it and everything else. It was pretty chatty, that's why they bought.
We'll get it straightened out, Ken.
I hope so.
But the one thing that you'll like though, and I'm surprised you didn't pick up on it, Ken, is. That truck five that we're going to replace is a, is going to be replaced to one of the trucks that you like, so that's some good news for you.
All right, Dave. Are we uh, can we make it through the? The budget?
Yeah, I think that's um fine for this evening, like I said, everybody can go through the line item. That'd be a good thing to do at the meeting devoted to it, we can just really pour through that. As I said, most of it is the same. Uh I'll update the year-to-date figures when we close out November, which uh the Treasury will close out tomorrow. And I would, we'll give you a uh an idea of where we are, because most items are. Well behind where they were last year, because we are trying to be uh Scrooge-like, keep expenses down as much as we can. Uh and I hope to have most of the community appropriations back by then, so I'll fill that out. So we all have a good idea if it's going to be under eighty-eight thousand. Uh yeah, and then we'll be able to see where everything is and we can adjust things as uh. People review and think about this.
All right. Well, that takes us down to the end of the the evening, if uh we had some public, we would invite them for uh comments again. Uh reviewing action items uh in the waterboard, uh I recall that Josh is going to talk. with the state about the, the allocation issue with North Bennington and see if they are handling that with North Bennington. And then the only other actions I saw were related to the next meeting. We want to get the word out that we're, you know, covering and explaining the budget next time. And also that we are covering the what for some people is the rather large issue of whether or not we hold in-person town meeting in March. Did anybody hear anything else that we promised we would do? All right, in that case, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Moved by Ken.
Second.
Second by Art. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Anyone opposed to adjourning? All right, we are done. Thank you, gentlemen.